Good evening. A now call to order the July 11th, 2023 School Board Meeting of the Marion County School Board to order at 5:30 PM. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each of their school days, we will now pause for a moment of silence. Please join me. I'll now ask Vice Chair Nancy Thrower to please read our Board Commitment Statement. Good evening, Vice Chair.
Good evening, Chair. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone to silence their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the Board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the School Board only. Presentations to the Board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the Board regarding a regular agenda item or on matters which the Board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach-colored form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the Board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime-green colored form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the Board Clerk no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board Clerk, please call the roll.
This is Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
This is Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett, will you please introduce a member of your team who's going to be helping us with tonight's inspirational pledge?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Great to see you this evening. And it would be my pleasure to introduce Ms. Emma Dingman. She is the Coordinator for Arts and Crafts, among many other things, in our district at Camp Kiwanis, and she's here to introduce to us some very special guests. So, thank you, Ms. Dingman, for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board Members. Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Emma Dingman, and it is an honor to be here today representing Camp Kiwanis. Behind me, I have two of our exceptional camp counselors who are joining me. I first have Cameron Goodwin and her brother Jamison Goodwin, who both attend Vanguard High School and were counselors this year at Camp Kiwanis. After I provide the inspiration, I'm going to give them an opportunity to share a little bit about their experience as campers and counselors, and then they will lead us in the pledge. I am excited to share with you a little bit about all the wonderful things that happen at Camp Kiwanis each summer. Firstly, I chose to join the Camp Kiwanis team because I could not stop thinking about how amazing it would be to be a part of such an influential program that has so many traditions that have been impacting Marion County public school students of all ages for many years now. I also chose to join the Camp Kiwanis family because, as a VPK teacher, I work with our youngest learners day-to-day. But I wanted an opportunity to also work with some of our older students who are in high school or have even completed high school and are now in college, who continue to return and serve Marion County students. These high school counselors are so inspirational to our Marion County students, to our younger students, and really serve as role models for the campers. The campers want to be just like them. Camp Kiwanis is a traditional summer camp that runs five-day sessions for children's ages seven to 13 with camp counselors who are in high school. The camp is a cooperative program between Marion County Public Schools and the Kiwanis Club of Ocala and provides fun for 416 campers each summer with a staff of 34, who all are Marion County Public School employees. Camp Kiwanis started in 1948 and has continued to make an impact on the Marion County community for 75 years now. Some of the daily activities at camp include swimming, canoeing, arts and crafts, games, and archery. All these activities are designed to be fun, safe, and, most importantly, allow the kids to be kids. Many of these students can experience things that they have never had the chance to do before. The surge of confidence they feel when getting a bullseye with an arrow at the archery range, or the teamwork they use to paddle the canoe across the lake, or the friendships they make when exchanging a box braid they made in arts and crafts with a friend are all feelings and memories that they will never forget. Not only do they get to do things that have never done before, but they also get to make a connection with the outdoors away from screens. When you ask kids why they love camp, they might mention the sense of community, fun activities, camp traditions, and connections to their counselors. And what they might not realize at that time is without their smartphones and away from screens is what allowed that fun. The absence of this technology creates space for children to play together, which helps kids grow cognitively and socially, and build meaningful, authentic connections with their peers and the adults around them. It is no wonder that we are always hear from our campers that camp friends are the best friends. I will leave you with a story from this past week at camp. Each Friday when campers leave, we have a Goodbye Ceremony with milk and cookies. And if campers would like, they get to share something they loved about camp. One of the girls raised her hand and, with tears on her cheeks, said, "The best thing about camp this week is that I feel like I made a new family." And that is the exact reason I plan to be a part of the Camp Kiwanis team for as long as they allow me. Although Camp Kiwanis is not fancy, it has a profound effect on our Marion County community, and it is an honor to be a part of it. I'm going to let Cameron and Jamison share their experiences. They were campers and now are counselors, and then they will lead us in the pledge. Thank you very much.
Hello, I am Cameron Goodwin. I was a counselor, well, for three years, and I was a camper for three as well. So I've spent the last, well, six of my summers at Camp Kiwanis, and I have loved every second of it. Even as a camper, I remember how much I loved being there. It was one of my favorite places on earth and still is, even as a counselor. I would count down the days and the months until I could be at camp again, even as a camper, waiting for milk and cookies to see all my friends, but most importantly, to see the counselors I was with this week. All my friends would wonder which counselors we could go with and which ones were the cooler ones and all that stuff, and I just remember being there and thinking how old and mature and cool all my counselors were, and I'm so grateful that I could be a part of that now. When I first applied, I applied as soon as possible as I got out of my freshman year, and I have loved it ever since. I want to stay there as long as possible, and I just love being a role model for all these young girls out there. I'm going to hand it over to my brother.
As Cameron said, I am her brother. My name is Jamison Goodwin. I'm going to be a junior now at Vanguard High School. And unlike my sister, I was not a camper at Camp Kiwanis, but I've now been a counselor for two years, and I have loved every second of it, and it has been one of the highlights of my life. When I first came there, I didn't really know what to expect. I'd never been to camp before, and I really didn't know anyone that was doing camp besides my sister. But the team really made me feel like I was at home, and for four weeks, every month for the past two years, I have a new family every week. But the main joy that I get out of camp is seeing the smiles on the children's faces when they hit a bullseye, or they win in a canoe race, or they do anything that accomplishes them with their friends. And I've heard it once, and I've heard it so many times, that the kids really develop a family at camp. And I know kids that... We have these memory books that Ms. Dingman makes in art class, and every week, my children use them to write down each other's numbers so they can communicate after camp and have their parents make playdates and hang out and everything. And I've dealt with kids from ages seven to 13, and they're all vastly different, but they all have one similarity in that they love camp, they make friends, and they develop an amazing family there that they can keep for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
We'd like to ask you to stand for the pledge now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. us all about Camp Kiwanis. Such a fun time for so many students and impacts students and faculty and staff, all alike, in Marion County public schools. So moving on to Item 3.1, we would now like to take time to recognize donations sent from several gracious individuals and organizations. Dr. Paul Urban to Forest High School, Ms. Mary Meltzer to Dunellen Elementary School, Mid-Florida Regional Manufacturers Association, also known as Mr. Ma, to Bellevue High School. All of these donations are listed in the Board Packet, and the overall total is $5,785. Thank you so much to these individuals and organizations for their generosity to our schools and community. And Dr. Paul Urban and I, I made him famous one time. He used to have an article in a newspaper for three years, and I was his ghostwriter. So, just a little fun fact, I love seeing Paul Urban still contributing in our school system. So now, moving on, Dr. Gullett, would you like to make a recommendation on the agenda?
I certainly would. Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the July 11th, 2023 School Board Meeting with the materials in the Board Packet. Those materials distributed to Board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items: They have all been placed under discussion, and Item C-16.1 has also been placed under discussion, pulled agenda items. Item C-11.1 has been completely withdrawn from the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 25th, 2023 Special School Board Meeting?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Martinez Lopez, can you please provide proof of publication for this evening's meeting?
The notice for the July 11th, 2023 Board Meeting ran in the Ocala Star Banner on June 30th, 2023.
Thank you. I will now ask the School Board's Attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board today. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating directly to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure that the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the School Board's Clerk no later than 5:40 PM. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order received by the School Board Clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons present who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice on screen to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The Board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, or position or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the Board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have any speakers this evening?
Madam Chair, we do not have any speakers, but I would like to make a correction. For the record, that advertisement ran in the Ocala Gazette, not the Ocala Star Banner.
Thank you so much. Okay, so since we do not have any speakers, at this time, we will open the floor for public comments for the 2023-2024 Recommended Instructional Materials. This is Item C-7.1, so we are declaring a public hearing. I now declare a public hearing. At this time, opening the floor for public comments for the 2023-2024 Recommended Instructional Materials for the adoption of 11 specified courses, all outlined in the online portion of the meeting. However, I can read those for the purpose of the record. Mathematics for Grade 7 Acceleration, Florida Reveal Mathematics; Mathematics for College Algebra, College Prep, Algebra, Second Edition; Grade 6 Social Studies, World History, Voice and Perspectives, Early Ages, Florida Education; Grade 7 Social Studies, Civics, Florida Edition; Grade 8 Social Studies, United States History, Voices and Perspectives, Early Years, Florida Education; High School World History, World History, Florida Education; High School United States History, United States History, Modern Times, Florida Edition; High School Economics, Economics, Florida Edition; High School Economics with Financial Literacy, Economics, Florida Edition; High Government, United... High School Government, United States Government and Civics, Florida Edition; and High School Personal Financial Literacy, which is an elective course, Foundations of Financial Literacy, 11th Edition. Are there any individuals present who would like to speak as offering public comment on this public hearing for the adoption of these items? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion and a second to approve this item? Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Ms. Martinez Lopez.
Madam Chair, this is just for public comment. The public hearing will happen on the 25th.
Thank you. That further...
No motion at the time.
Thank you. There is not a need for a motion.
Correct.
That clears that up. I was confused as to why we were having that and not the public... Okay, perfect. So this was not a public hearing. This was just the public comment.
That is correct.
All right. So, may I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-9.1 through C-17.2, with the exception of items D-18.1, D-18.2, D-18.3, D-18.4, D-18.5, D-18.6, D-18.7, D-18.8, D-18.9, that have been placed under discussion; Item C-16.1, that has been placed under discussion for pulled agenda items; and Item C-11.1, that has been completely withdrawn from the agenda.
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. Item D-18.1, may I have a motion to approve the new job description for Family Engagement Liaison, 5.45?
Motion to approve the new job description.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Is there any discussion on this item, Board? Dr. Gullett, I believe you have something to add here as well.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I just wanted to provide some context to this change. This used to be known as our homeschool liaison, and all of those will change and now be identified as the family engagement liaison, with the exception of those with a special program and grants through our home instruction for the parents of the preschool youngsters. So those are the only exceptions because there are parameters associated with that grant and that funding, but this will better provide context to the work that's happening with the liaisons. So happy to answer any questions. Ms. Hughes is here as well, who oversees, which will, based on pending Board approval, family engagement liaisons. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Board, is there any additional discussion on this item? Ms. Conrad?
I just want to say I'm really thankful for this position, coming out of the classroom last year and having another person on staff to help connect families, especially sometimes families that are hard to reach. I'm just really thankful. In the job description, it talks about working on attendance and finding resources for a family, and so I'm just really grateful that we have the opportunity to continue this position in our district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Any additional comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the new job description for the School Safety Officer, 4.98?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James.
Second.
Second by Reverend Cummings. Dr. Gullett, do you have something to add on this, or actually, the next five items?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, absolutely. Likewise, Board, with prior meetings, we've grouped these job descriptions. They all fall under Safe Schools, and so you will see a number of those different positions based upon prior Board approval, some of those changes, and some of those requirements and needs. So we're happy to answer any questions. Ms. Morant is here, if you have any specific questions for Human Resources. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board, is there any specific discussion on the new job description for the School Safety Officer? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the new job description for School Safety and Security Coordinator, 1.34?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Conrad.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the new job description for Threat Management Coordinator, 1.45?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Any discussion on this job description? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the revised job description for the Executive Director of Safety and Security, 1.39?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the revised job description for the School Security and Training Specialist, 4.19?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. The only item that I have for discussion on this particular one is currently the job description. If we were to approve it as is, does say it reports to the Director of Safety and Security, and because we just previously, in the previous motion, just approved that position title change, this one also will need to be updated to ensure that it says Executive Director of Safety and Security is who it reports to.
And Madam Chair, we will also be... The plan is that we're going to update that in our next set of Niola policy updates, and that was, or I should say, our policy updates is no longer Niolas. And that was Policy 1,000, or I'm sorry, 0100, which outlines and definitions, the Director of Safety and Security shall also mean Director of Marion County School Board Police Department, and we will have both of those changed to indicate executive at that point.
Okay. On this particular job description for the School Security and Training Specialist, 4.19, it will just need to be updated to say Executive Director of Safety and Security. So if we want to amend the motion or the job description as amended, if you guys are okay with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. I don't remember who... I think Reverend Cummings was... made the motion. I don't remember.
I'll accept amendment.
Okay. We are all accepting of the amendment, so whoever motioned and seconded, we're all accepting of it. If there's any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion? Oh, actually, Dr. Gullett, would you like to speak to our next two job descriptions, which are Item 18.7 and 18.8, before we have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. These two items are related to contract with regard to the Department of Health. They did not renew our contract for our nurses, and so that's why you see this. And one is for school, and of course, one is for district. So Ms. Morant, again, is available for any questions you may have specific to Human Resources, but it's pertaining to this change in contract. That was no longer... That was not renewed.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the new job description for Registered Nurse for School, 5.07?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the new job description for Registered Nurse District, 5.06?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the School Board of Highlands County, RFP, SBHC, 2223-33, and Contract Request for Proposal, 2223-33, Food and Supply Purchasing Services. May I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Dr. Gullett, would you like to add anything on this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, this is a large dollar amount, $12.5 million, and this is bringing... coming to you because of the increase in food costs, as we've discussed previously. And so we wanted to make sure that if you had any questions about this, we could certainly attempt to answer them, but it's based on those increases that we're seeing in general and specifically to the district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Vice Chair.
Just have one comment. Thank you, Chair, that it's just a sign of the times that the bid-approved pricing will be evaluated weekly, and it just goes to show you, you know, the volatility. We think inflation is coming down, and in some areas it is, but food just remains stubbornly high, and I know I feel that personally. So I'm glad that we're continuing to monitor this, and hopefully, things will begin to come down and... come down, and 12 million, 500,000 dollars is a lot of food for a lot of people. But we got to have it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any additional discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the Administrative Personnel Items 2023-2024 Fiscal Year?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Board, I requested this to be pulled and put into the pulled agenda just because if you will look at the items specifically in board docs, you will see that there are three separate documents that have been uploaded, and one was uploaded just last evening. So I wanted to ensure that if there was any additional comments, with it being about 24 hours notice that we got and these changes were made, it just felt it needed to be pulled so that we could have additional discussion if need be, just for the sake of transparency. Is there any discussion on this item beyond that? Hearing and, yes, Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, and I appreciate the Board's approval, pending approval of this, because as you know, we always work to try to make sure that we meet those deadlines, but it's really important, especially in the summer, as we're hiring, that we have our staff in place at our schools so they can continue and prepare for the upcoming school year. So thank you for your consideration and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett, for that, because I'd rather have them, have them start than have them wait and start late. That is a terrible way to kick off the school year, and it's very stressful for someone to try to walk in and get started when pre-planning is already begun, and it's, it's just so much better to do it this way. So I would much rather receive these items late than have these folks have to wait another two weeks to get on with us if they're the right person for the job. So thank you for that.
Chair, I concur. I think sometimes we get these late, and it says addendum to our board packet, but making sure that we have all the right puzzle pieces in place before school starts is vital to the success of the district. So I don't mind seeing these on here like that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. And thank you for your patience that I put it there, because if it's 24 hours notice, it does feel it needs a little bit additional discussion beyond just going into a consent agenda. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to Board and Superintendent comments. So I will first say that there will be a public workshop on July 13th this week at 5:30 PM. The purpose of that workshop will be to discuss impact fees and special exception for impact fees. We also have an administrative briefing and work session scheduled for July 20th, 2023. Board, I will start our board comments this evening because we do have a couple of what I will address as board items to, board work, I guess we could discuss. So tonight, in the consent agenda, we officially approve Ms. Martinez Lopez to be moving from the superintendent's staff to the board's staff, and congratulations, Ms. Martinez Lopez, you now report to all of us. But there are a couple of items in meeting with Ms. Martinez Lopez this past week, last week, that I would like to bring to the Board's attention for us to have discussion on. The first one of those is board work session minutes. So when we review and approve board meeting and work session minutes, the work session minutes often include a lot of redundancy from what we have in our posted PowerPoint presentations. Because we currently have our work sessions livestreamed with audio and video recording available, as well as the PowerPoint presentations that are often quite extensive, I would like to ask for the Board to discuss the prospect of reducing the detail in our work session minutes, thereby reducing the time needed to produce those minutes. I don't know if you, I know that I have seen a preview of what's coming in our July 25th meeting upcoming, and it's the board work session minutes from the Benesh presentation, and it, she has gone, got every, every single slide she has written information about. And I'm not certain that that robustness is needed in our work session minutes, and I'd like Attorney Powers to speak to it before we have additional discussion.
Yes, and I've addressed this previously with school board meetings. The same applies to school board work sessions or workshops, and that is that there is a minimum level of requirement that there be a notice of who was attending, in the case of a school board meeting, what votes were taken. But the agenda itself is quite detailed, and then the data that is shared is also quite detailed and is there, provided on board docs publicly forever after that. There is no requirement that there be anything additional. As you indicated, it's also livestreamed, it's also audio recorded. So there's no requirement for there to be additional note-taking. And in fact, in many cases, as with board meetings, summarizing actually creates increased confusion, no matter how well that could be summarized, because independent of how well someone might summarize, the actual record, the best evidence is what actually happened that is there, that can be pulled up by the public at any time, day or night, and see what was there via video, via the agenda items, and also the PowerPoint presentations that are included publicly. So that it would appear to be a duplication of effort and one that actually makes us less accurate than, than more. I would advise, and it's of course within the Board's discretion to do it either way, but I would advise that that constitutes some wasted effort on the behalf of our board clerk in order to be, having to do that, and largely unnecessary. So I, that would be my input to you, though certainly if you wish to have more detail as to what exactly was said in writing, other than what's on the, you know, the video, then at that point, I believe the necessary route would be to hire an actual transcriptionist who comes to every meeting and sits and takes actual detailed word for word, here's what happened, which would be an unnecessary expense, it's not required under Florida statute.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Board, additional discussion?
Madam Chair.
Reverend Cummings.
It's strange that this is coming up, because we just had this conversation some months ago, and we were, we were, we, we said, Attorney said the same thing that he said then, and we went a different direction. So it's strange that we're having this conversation again when this could have been done months ago, and the workload could have already been reduced. So we even went as far as saying we were going to type our notes and comments and send them to the board clerk to put in, because we wanted it to be that detail. So I was in agreement that we should have did that last year.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Vice Chair Thrower?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's just part of the ongoing transition from the written notes to technology, using technology to actually enhance and make the work easier, you know, and quicker. And I think that we've been going through a straddle period, because it is very difficult for those of us that weren't raised with technology to become comfortable with believing that the technology is going to be there and it's going to be available. There are a lot of questions that I had initially, especially about YouTube, you know, like whatever, what would happen, have YouTube melted down, or, you know, things like that. And I think there's still some school boards that don't televise or even do audio. So in our zeal to be, we'd rather be accused of being overly transparent if anyone would ever make that accusation, but then there's common sense in trying to use the technology as it was created to reduce workload and begin to transition off. So I'm all for it. We have so much on our plates, and every employee does, so whatever we can do to streamline the workload and put technology to good use, instead of technology, you know, wagging us, let's wag it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any additional discussion?
Works for me.
Okay. Okay, terrific. So the Board has a consensus that our work session minutes can be reduced significantly, Ms. Martinez Lopez. I wish we could have this discussion before you typed all those 90 pages of minutes for Benesh.
They'll be there in perpetuity.
Yes, they'll be there forever.
In eight forms.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much, Board.
And Madam Chair, to be clear, board members individually who may wish to type notes regarding the meeting or regarding anything that they, their comments, may certainly still submit, and that will then become part of the attached record. So that's sort of your extra stopgap measure to make sure that if something needed to be in there, that it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Powers. Appreciate the clarification. Okay, a couple more items to address. One of them is flex time. So this is something that Ms. Martinez Lopez brought to my attention. My personal participation and familiarity with salaried positions that I've had always included, if I had an evening meeting or one or two times a month as a part of my job, it was understood that I would be there, and maintaining a flex time bank of sorts wasn't necessary. But I would like to ask if the Board would please address this, the concept of Ms. Martinez Lopez in her newly titled position having flex time and what that would look like for the Board to discuss.
And may I provide some information to the Board first as to our current status?
Please.
We have our policy under the Fair Labor Standards Act, Policy 6700, regarding Salary Fair Labor Standards Act, which requires overtime pay for some employees and things of that nature. Overall, historically, having a, one pay period, not a bank, but essentially within one pay period, having flex or comprehensive time, or whatever it's been called in the past, it goes by many names, has proven to be a good buffer between the possibility that someone, we could be in violation of an overtime matter, because it's not just a matter of salaried versus hourly employees. There are a number of steps and categories that some of the folks here could probably speak to better than I can, as to who's entitled to overtime and for what reasons. But largely, that may be solved by having within one pay period time for the employee to take that time back off. However, that was also a proposed Neola policy that was edited by staff and approved by the Board in July of last year, which made the policy stand silent, whereas flex or comp time was, was permitted under the Neola policy, and it would be permitted at the Board's discretion for staff. That, by the Human Resources Department at that time, that was edited out so that, and then the Board approved that. So, so that it's silent as to that matter. It doesn't say you can't, and it doesn't say that you can, but it is silent. So there's not currently an actual policy on point as to what happens in practice. I will leave that to other people to describe to the Board. But if that, such things were to be a discussion that you take up and later vote on, I believe that the enacting measure should be to include whatever you come up with within our policy and have board discussion related to that. Now, we can certainly do that with this next series of updates that we're going to be doing quite soon, because of course, that will, since it affects policy, it would be rulemaking and development, and we'd have to go through the proper channels for that. So if the Board chooses to make an alteration as to the practices or, you know, with the recommendations of, of staff, then we would likely want that to be inclusive here. There is nothing certainly that says that board staff have to be treated in exactly the same way as superintendent staff, because we've never really had that issue come up. However, typically, it has followed in that direction. So that's the best background I can give overall. Again, it's Board's discretion as to what the Board wants to do with its particular employees as to that matter.
Thank you for the clarification, Attorney Powers. Ms. Conrad?
I just want to say I'm a big proponent of flex time. I'm surprised by the one pay period. I would really like to see it go quarterly, and I'm just thinking from my experience in the past, doctor's appointments or sick kids, those kind of things. And when we look at this, we're in this position with recruitment and retention of staff members. I think that's a small way for us to give back to the people who are working every day, showing up. And I mean, really, just, you look in the audience, who's here at every meeting? You know, they're, they're here supporting, here to provide information that we may not have. So, so I think it's a great perk, I'll use that term, because there's not very many in education anymore. And so I'm just a big proponent of flex time. I would be interested in extending the timeframe to something that was more on a quarterly basis, because just thinking about, and please feel free to share, I'm not sure how everybody thinks about that, but for me personally, I was looking to use that kind of time when I needed to scoot out to get to a doctor's appointment or take a family member to do something, and so that would be important to me.
Dr. James?
Thank you. I would say that I think that there are, my understanding and what I just heard is there are some procedures and policies in the works from Dr. Gullett's office for procedures potentially on, I think probably a plethora of manners that you may bring up tonight related to the position. And so Attorney Powers brought up a great point that while board employees don't always follow what Dr. Gullett's employees or what we union negotiate, we do typically mirror for represented and non-represented employees the same, the same negotiated terms, even though our non-represented folks don't technically have to fall under those, those guidelines. So I would offer tonight that we continue to operate how we've been operating in Ms. Martinez Lopez's role, and when Dr. Gullett or the unions negotiate any changing in terms, we then bring those changes to our employees to then discuss. But I, I don't really think, I don't see the wheel as broken, so I don't necessarily think why we need to spend a lot of time talking about fixing a non-broken wheel. So I would just suggest we keep working the way we've been working, and as changes happen in union contracts or with Dr. Gullett's procedures for her employees, like hybrid work, for instance, we can implement those for our employees, all of them, not just Ms. Martinez Lopez. Because I do think if we're going to talk about flex time for one employee, that would be something we would offer all of our employees. So.
Thank you, Dr. James. Additional discussion? Vice Chair?
Sure. I guess I'll just say that being a micromanager is, is not my management style. I like to keep it simple, and in my mind, if you're getting the work done and you're happy in your job and you're getting along well with your colleagues, then I'm good. And I love the idea of the quarterly time, because in the real world, things come up. But my concern lies with the folks that need a lot more support to do their job to the level that we want and need them to do. So like I just said, as long as the work's getting done, they're happy in their job, they're getting along with their teammates, and, and in this day and age, is anyone ever really off?
Right.
You know, we were just talking about technology, and so I'll leave that right there.
And I will point out also for those listening that if a good, close approximation of what the original policy was before some of those things were edited out is currently in practice with Leon County Schools, and I pulled off of their board docs as well, they actually have a policy related to overtime and compensatory time. So it, it does come with quite a bit, in order to do it correctly and fairly among everyone, if that is the path that the Board wishes to do, it does still come with a lot of necessity for documentation, for how it's run, and it's going to come with additional necessity for, you know, training staff in how to do, the staff supervisors, and how to make sure that it's documented properly so that you don't run into problems down the line. So if you wish to do that, Leon County is a, has a model there that at least works for them, and that would be something to perhaps review, and I can send you a copy of that if anybody wants to look at it. But obviously, those are discussions for the Board to have, and then, of course, for the superintendent and her staff to have as well.
Thank you, Attorney Powers.
Madam Chair.
Reverend Cummings.
Currently, we don't have a comp policy, and I'm saying that for a reason. If that's something that's needed, I think staff need to bring it forward to us, not us presenting a policy to put out there like that. I think what's, what's been happening has been working, so let's continue to keep letting it work and let it go through. We understand sometimes- We understand sometimes staff are here very, very long times beyond the work hour. And I personally, in positions that I've worked, have had that flexibility. Depending, I didn't have it with every person I've worked for. But in certain positions, I had that flexibility to be able to offset some work time to go to a doctor's appointment or to go to my kid's school. So if what's working, what's in place has been working now, let's not change ships in the middle of the ocean. Let's just keep moving forward. We don't need to get hung up on something like this. I think this is something that could open up a can of worms that could lead us down the road, a rabbit hole that we don't need to be down right now.
Thank you Reverend Cummings. As you know, in the job description that we approved in our last meeting, it does state that Ms. Martinez Lopez works closely with the school board chair who serves as the school board designated direct supervisor. So some of these conversations are things that are new to us as a board, having a new employee. And I, as the designated direct supervisor, can't unilaterally make these decisions. And so when Ms. Martinez Lopez addressed flex time with me, it was something I was not aware of. And I felt it was important to bring it before the board to have conversation. But hearing what the board's direction is, we will proceed with what has been occurring in that position. Another item to discuss, I have two more. One of them, Ms. Martinez Lopez presented to us this evening, which is the hybrid work guidelines that have been detailed. She did distribute hybrid work guidelines to the board this evening with a request to participate in this pilot program through August 30th. So board, this is also something that I, as the board chair, am unable to make the decision unilaterally. And so if you would like to discuss this this evening, we can do so. Or if we would like to hold off on this discussion for another time, what is the purview of the board, Vice Chair?
I think we can make this pretty quick too. Our Executive Director of Employment Services, Ms. Maramp, called us, I think individually, to let us know that the long awaited hybrid opportunity was going to be extended as a pilot until August. I'm not exactly sure what the date certain is, maybe August 11th. But don't quote me, August. And I could not be more excited because this is why we're losing so many great employees, that there are jobs that lend themselves to some flexible work, hybrid, and that it's difficult to wrap our heads around. Because in the world of education, you know, you're together. That's what it's all about, is being together. But we have many positions where, that really do lend themselves to hybrid work. I know that when I've come in to our board office, I've seen Ms. Martinez Lopez, you know, be behind her desk with two monitors going. And I'm thinking to myself, why does that have to happen in an office? So I would be very open and amenable to having her participate in the pilot. It's already July, you know, 11th, and that's where I got the 11th from. And August is fast approaching. So I would love to see this happen.
Thank you. Ms. Conrad.
This is actually one of the first conversations I had with Dr. Gullett when I joined the board in November. Not with Ms. Martina Lopez in mind, but that as we look at recruiting and retention, making this available to as many employees as possible. I know not every job description will fit it, but many will. And I hope it will help us retain good employees when they have a little bit of flexibility because the rest of the world is able to do that. And so if we want to keep people and we want to keep our people happy, I think it's a very good alternative. And I'm looking forward to implementing this and moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad.
I'm on board.
Dr. James, Reverend Cummings.
It's a pilot program.
It is?
There's no way we're going to know if it works unless we try it. So it's going to be so fair you both to try.
I'd like to add one thing.
Yes, sir.
As I just said too, I would like, whatever, as we discussed, I know we're centered on speaking about Ms. Martinez Lopez. But in my mind, this conversation is about Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. And extending this flexibility to Ms. Martinez Lopez also extends to Mr. Powers, Attorney Powers, and Dr. Gullett. And I want to just make sure that we're all on the same page about that. While everyone on this stage is a workhorse, I do believe that it would be more than appropriate, although Mr. Powers doesn't seem to get any service at his house. So I don't know, I don't know how he would work from there. But I want to afford that opportunity to all of our employees.
That's really great to say. And it's important because we were just talking about one, that's what I was focused on. Thank you.
Thank you. And my final board business conversation this evening is in relation to the board services cellphone. So the board has previously discussed the possibility of Ms. Martinez Lopez having a district cellphone. And while I understand that district budgets have been reduced by 20% for next year, or at least are in process, this would be an added cost. But this conversation does need to continue. For starters, I personally would like to request that board members no longer send messages to Ms. Martinez Lopez's personal cellphone. As elected officials, our messages can be considered and requested for public records requests at any time. And any board member sending messages to Ms. Martinez Lopez's personal phone opens her up to public records requests as well. Secondly, while I personally can't determine a need for communication with Ms. Martinez Lopez apart from email or her office phone, well, if she's going hybrid, that may change. That was, I typed all this up before the hybrid thing came up. But I do welcome the conversation among board members about a matter of our board services new executive assistant to the school board receiving a cellphone from the district. That conversation is warranted.
We have a cellphone policy correct. And I think our attorney has a cellphone, our superintendent has cellphones. There are other members in the cabinets and around the district that have cellphones that we respond to and we reach to them, reach out to them. If Ms. Martinez Lopez, and I hate that we keep putting her name to this, even though this is directly related, but it just kind of feels uncomfortable. I think we need to go ahead and get the cellphone, not have a long discussion on this and move on down the road with this. We should not, we have, we, at one point when I was on the board, the board, we used our own personal cellphones. We requested and got approved that we would move away from our personal cellphones and use a district phone for that very same reason. Business should be conducted on the school board phone. So I don't think, I wouldn't want anyone invading my personal privacy by having access to my personal phone. So I think it's really not a conversation, just something that we should do.
Thank you Reverend Cummings.
I agree.
Dr. James, Ms. Conrad, Vice Chair.
It's the way the world is today. And I'm pretty sure we have a great contract. And I highly doubt that adding one cellphone that we probably already have in a closet somewhere is going to break the bank. So let's roll.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And thank you, board, for allowing the opportunity to have those discussions on those four items. I understand putting Ms. Martinez Lopez's name to this, all of this conversation. She and I talked about this, understanding that all of these topics are things that the board has to discuss publicly and can't unilaterally make decisions. So fortunately or unfortunately, she was aware it was going to occur. So thank you so much, board, I appreciate that. To wrap up my board comments, I just wanted to say, a reminder to all of you about Attorney Powers evaluation that you have received as school board members. We all have received as school board members so that we can get that completed by the end of this month. And the last thing that I wanted to mention as District One School Board Member that has Osceola Middle as one of my assigned schools, as well as a parent of Osceola Middle School student, we as board members received information this week that while we were going to try to replace the air conditioning there and had S R dollars to do so, now the roof is not fully functional. And just today, Mr. Koff sent out a notice to all parents about that the gym is not going to be accessible for this year. I do know that on July 20th, we'll be having additional conversations, potentially inclusive of Osceola Middle School. But as a personal note, I would like to make, advocate for greater renovation or replacement of the gymnasium. While we're already shutting it down for 2023, 2024, it would be much more functional, and this is just a personal thing, it would be much more functional if we just went ahead and fixed the Osceola Gym. Currently, they're playing all of their home games for boys and girls volleyball and boys and girls basketball here on the M T I campus. Their sports practices have to be outside, often on the outdoor courts because of lack of available space inside. The girls locker rooms are across the outdoor courts because when the school was built 100 years ago, boys and girls didn't have P E together. So before we get into any of the further A C design, I just wanted to make that personal note. I know we'll have additional discussion on July 20th about it. But all of this is kind of late breaking. We all received the information this week. So just speaking on it as a personal note, the school board member representing District One and also a parent of Osceola student, I think that it would warrant the board to at least consider what that would look like for us to go with a replacement gymnasium at Osceola. So we'll have additional discussion on that on July 20th. So that concludes my comments. And I'll go back around the table now because nobody else has spoken. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Attorney Powers, anything from legal?
Nothing more.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll be brief. Two items, as you all know, we have kindergarten kickstart underway this week. So we started this in recent years. I'm very excited because it provides our young people coming to us to learn in kindergarten, an opportunity to be comfortable and acclimate. And I think that sets them off for success. And also, we are hiring, if you didn't know. And thank you, Mr. Christian, for putting the word out. So we have a career fair Wednesday, July 19th, from 11 to 2. And we are hosting at Fort King Middle School, Lake Weir, and Marion Oaks. So we look forward to hiring more talented employees to our ready-talented team. So I thank you, board.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Reverend Cummings.
Thank you Superintendent for your comments, Madam Chair. I have to leave. However, Superintendent just echoed what I was about to say about the job fair. Oftentimes, we hear from people who are looking for positions within the school district. I want to encourage them to please take advantage of the job fairs. It's strategically located throughout the county at different schools. And so I encourage folk that are looking for employment, that want to work for our district, to please get on the site and please attend those job fairs so you can know what openness there are. And we can get those positions filled and we can start school in a great shape with less vacancies. So again, I'm hoping everyone had a great Fourth of July. Your summer's going well. But we'll be back in school in a few weeks, a few weeks. And some folk came back to work this week. And so we're in preparation mode for the upcoming year. So I'm looking forward to what's down the road, what's down the road. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Please excuse me.
Thank you. Dr. James.
Good evening, Marion County community. Tonight, we got to hear more about Camp Kiwanis. I love what it represents and can't wait for my own children to get the opportunity to participate in camp in just a few more summers. Having programs like this in our community is what makes Marion County so special. As I have done previously, I want to take a moment to recognize the administrative personnel items that we approved in tonight's agenda. Ms. Thomas Dickey, appointed as an Assistant Principal of Discipline at Horizon Academy. Ms. Colbert, who's coming back to Marion County, appointed as an Assistant Principal of Instruction to Liberty Middle. Ms. Duncan, growing from an Assistant Principal of Discipline to Instruction at Fort King Middle. Mr. Ingram, transitioning his role as a coordinator in district technology to a coordinator in elementary curriculum and instruction. Ms. Johnson, transitioning her role as a coordinator in elementary curriculum and instruction to a coordinator in district technology. Ms. Jones, growing from an Assistant Principal of Discipline to Instruction at North Marion Middle. Mr. Malvanato, growing from a program specialist to Assistant Principal of Discipline at Bellevue Middle. Ms. McCain, growing from a school psychologist to coordinator in our psychology services. Mr. McLean, growing from a coordinator to an Assistant Principal of Curriculum at Westport. Ms. Rimburnudi, growing from a student services manager to Assistant Principal of Discipline at Liberty Middle. I want to formally also welcome Ms. Martinez Lopez as a board employee officially tonight in the consent agenda. I look forward to continuing to work beside you to accomplish great things for this district. I wanted to take a moment to highlight the athletic programs throughout our county. We have great coaches and athletic directors throughout our schools. I had the pleasure of personally working with the Forest High School boys head basketball coach, Mike Hoffman, when I was employed with the district previously. He is one of the best fundraisers in this district. And I wanted to highlight a fundraising win from just yesterday. Since Coach Hoffman has been at Forest High, he has put on a charity golf tournament to fundraise for the team. This year, he had 21 teams and 82 golfers participate and brought home $22,160 for the team. This is an increase from the previous years, which were still pretty amazing, at $11,100 in year one and $15,505 in year two. While Coach Hoffman is a tremendous fundraiser, I do look forward to the opportunity for this board to discuss in the near future, the potential for creating a possible annual discretionary fund for our district athletic director, Mr. Donnie Tucker, to use to help fund all of our athletic programs throughout the district. The research shows that student athletes perform academically. And I want to see this board continue to support the athletic programs throughout our district. Finally, as we enter into a new season of construction and building schools, something we haven't done in over 10 years, I wanted to take a moment to discuss the process of hiring contractors for these major projects. After speaking with Ms. Dobbins, I'm under the impression that there is a selection committee for the process of selecting the contractors for these upcoming projects. After speaking with our superintendent, we agreed it could be appropriate for a board member to sit on this selection committee as board members are afforded this opportunity to sit on a variety of committees like calendar, insurance, a variety. So I would ask this board to consider placing me as the board representative for this year. And then when we appoint four committees next year, it would be one of the committees that would be on our list. So that's what I'd like to bring to the board tonight.
For me? Works for me?
Okay. Well, as long as it works for Dr. Gullett, I think that's the direction we'll move. I just think, it came, kind of came to me that it was most committees that Dr. Gullett has, has a board member sitting on them. And this is one that we also haven't really done in quite some time.
Big deal.
And it's kind of a big deal. So I just thought it would be appropriate for us to at least have a voice. So thank you for hearing my comments. And that concludes tonight's comments from myself.
Thank you, Dr. James. Ms. Conrad.
Oh, that was quick. Quick, quick. Real quick, good evening, everyone. I just want to say again, I'm so excited about Camp Kiwanis and the presentation at the beginning. Not quite 100 years ago, but many years ago, I was a counselor at Camp Kiwanis. And Ms. DeBick and I had the privilege of being at the 75th year anniversary celebration this summer. And there's just great things. I especially love the part about no screen time. The kids, you know, Mrs. Thoreau, you've been talking about that a lot. Kids having a break from their screens. And so there are some great things that happen at Camp Kiwanis. And one of the things that I love is a quarter of the students that go there are on scholarship. And I thought, that's a really big number. And I believe this year they've left. But I think it was filled up in like 22 minutes. It filled up so fast. And so just really excited, the opportunities that the students in Marion County have to participate in that program. So I'm just, I'm really grateful for that. I'm also super excited. I feel that Marion County is blessed to have a kindergarten kickstart program. As a previous kindergarten teacher, it really is just so valuable to be able to have six or seven of your students on campus for a day, you know, just us, you know, to be together. And, you know, an elementary school is a big place to go to the cafeteria and to meet all the teachers that you see in art and music and P E and where the front offices and where you go to get a Band-Aid from the clinic. It's just a really big deal. And I think, I just want to say thank you that we have that opportunity. I think it is just such a blessing for our students and also our teachers for that program. I also wanted to say, give a shout out to Mr. Kevin Christian. We got an email that you have been very busy. Some accolades that came his way. So I actually, I'm just going to read it and I apologize, I'm going to apologize for that. But I didn't want to mess up the wording. So Marion County Public Schools is one of only five Florida school districts to capture winning awards from the National School Public Relations Association in its annual award competition. This prestigious honor were given, honors were given following more than 1,800 submissions. Marion County Public Schools captured the following awards this year. An award in excellence for our calendar, one of only eight nationwide. Thank you.
Yes, the work was worth it.
Yes. Award of merit for the superintendent's weekly wrap-up. So that's been great. Fast fax e-newsletter, which even as a board member, I appreciate receiving after each meeting. And honorable mention to the core values poster. So I just wanted to thank you for your work. You're always, he's always down here in the front. He's always, always working and busy and accommodating us. And that doesn't even mention the media. and accommodating, accommodating us, and that doesn't even mention the media festival that you just wrapped up so, not too long ago, and so just congratulations, and I'm sorry that it had to come in award form, but we are grateful for you and the work that you do, so thank you so much. And last but not least, on my list is we have backpack giveaways coming up soon, and our teachers may not be ready to hear this, they're not ready to think about buying school supplies, but the community is, and so we're going to be giving away backpacks. It's on our webpage with dates and schools, and so I ask that you take a peek at that, look out, and if you are in need of resources, be sure to check that out because it's a great resource for our students here in Marion County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad, Vice Chair Thrower.
Thank you, thank you, and yes, board member Conrad, the backpack giveaway is such a great collaboration with the Bullard Foundation and, and just lots of people. Our community is so supportive and giving and continues to be, and it's just a really exciting and important time. You know, we're setting the tone, busily setting the tone for the coming school year, and, and the COVID years, the last couple of years were just really hard, and, and we lost permanently some people, it just, it was awful, and, and we also had people that had to leave us because they had to care for family members and things like that. And there are people that are reaching out that are considering coming back now, you know, they're starting, you know, to feel the, the excitement and, and the stability and the direction that we're all trying to go, and, and so it's, it's just a really wonderful and enthusiastic time. I'm so glad that we're getting employee positions approved. It's a little bit daunting when I keep getting the board docs notification, like what is going on? But, but it's all great stuff, and, and like I said earlier, I would, I would much rather get those notifications late than make those employees wait because it's, it's all about them and to get the year started off right. And speaking of getting the year started off right, yes, the kindergarten kickstart is amazing, and hopefully it'll kickstart parents into really taking their kids and registering them for kindergarten. Don't please wait, don't wait till the first day of school. We want your children to be able to start and, and be calm and, and really be feeling like that, that school is a great place for them to be, and, and the best way to do that is to get them registered early so we can know that they're coming and, and everyone can start communicating with you. And yes, the Camp Kiwanis acknowledgement was very close to my heart. I was a kid that went to camp, I was a camp counselor, and I see the transformation in children when they have the opportunity, especially these days, to be away from their smartphones. They are free, they're free to be kids again, and that is so important in this day and age as kids are just, in my opinion, getting robbed of, of their childhoods. You know, they're, they're getting the answers before they even know the questions, and so to have that opportunity to just get out there and be kids and to hear their feedback, you know, that they build, they got to make new friends, and, and you have to really trust and rely on each other. And, and that's, to me, what this coming school year, preparing for, is all about, learning how to really trust and rely on each other. And thank you, Dr. James, for offering to be the first board member on the construction committee. I think it's going to be great. I've learned so much by being on the value adjustment board at the county. You know, there's a curiosity that each of us have on this board, and we have our passions. So, I'm really looking forward to what you share and what you learn. We haven't built a school in 10 years. You know, we're, we're coming into such exciting times, and it's like there's all these pieces around and gel, and we're just putting them all together, and, and goodness, you know, we, we have worked so hard and come through so much, and I think people are just really excited to have this year kickoff great and, and be a great year. I think our scores are looking really good. You know, there's more to do there, obviously. It'll be interesting to see what, what the state says about cut scores, and I guess we won't get school grades. They're not going to count anyway, but that's not going to happen till, till fall, which, you know, we're already talking about this year, and it's sort of like, that's so last year, but, but they're, they're important. And so, I'm just really, I continue to be thrilled to be part of this. It's the culmination of a very, very difficult few years, and I'm so happy that we're hearing from people that are considering coming back. They've reached some stability, you know, with what they had going on, so I say, bring it, come on, we're ready. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower, and thank you to each of the board members for the individual comments. Dr. James, thank you for bringing up about athletics. As we're heading into budgeting, that also is a passion of mine. I know that there has been opportunities in the past to create a line item for athletic transportation. That seems to be one of the largest costs that each of our teams have and it, each of our schools has, and it, for some equity across the board and some things like that, I, I too would love to see us be able to add a line item somewhere for athletics, for transportation specifically, or just as you had recommended, for discretionary spending for our district athletic director. So, thank you for bringing that up, and thank you to each of you for your individual comments as well. I'm not going to rehash everything else all of you said, but thank you so much. So, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through June 8th, 2023. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J D. 23-225 with educational services for the first and second semesters of the 2023-2024 school year?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James. Second by Ms. Conrad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 4-0. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower, second by Ms. Conrad. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 4-0. Our meeting is adjourned at 6:46 P M. Thank you.